Good evening and welcome to the April 10, 2012, meeting of the Glendale City Council. Can we have a roll call, please?
Council members, Mnuchin.
Here.
Najarian.
Here.
Quintero.
Here.
Weaver.
Here.
Mayor Friedman. Here. Can we hear your report, please? Oh, sorry, flag salute. Tonight's flag salute will be led by Councilmember Weaver.
Please raise your hand and join me in the flag salute.
Pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for this evening's invocation. This evening, we pray for the continued health and vitality of our city. We give thanks for the citizens who give freely of their time and support of this community and its many activities and programs. We pray for the safety of those who serve to protect our great nation, as well as pray for the safe return of our men and women serving overseas. Let us reflect on all that we have been given as citizens and residents of this fair city and this wonderful nation, and actively seek ways to give back. We pray for all this, and that our council and community be guided by the principles of fairness and cooperation during tonight's meeting and after. Amen.
Thank you. Now can we hear your report?
The report for this evening is that the agenda for the April 10, 2012, regular meeting of the Glendale City Council was posted on Thursday, April 5, 2012, on the bulletin board outside City Hall.
Thank you, and before we begin, let me give a special welcome to all the members of the IBEW who are in this chambers and also downstairs. As seats become available, we'll try to get more people upstairs from the downstairs area. Okay, next item.
Madam Mayor, before we turn to the next order of business, which will be the selection of the mayor, I'd like to ask if there is a motion to adjourn the housing authority meeting?
So moved.
Second.
We are adjourned for the Glendale Housing Authority.
Thank you. The next item before this body is, the next item of business before the council is the selection of the mayor. Last week, we had nomination of Councilmember Mnuchin, nomination of Councilmember Quintero, and nomination of Councilmember Weaver with a two-two-two tie. So, the city attorney has instructed me that all the motions carry over to this meeting. There is a number of ways where we can do this. We could do a roll call, and each council member can state their name for preference for mayor, or we can take the carried-over motions one at a time.
And I would add, Madam Mayor, members of the council, that the council, absent any direction from the council otherwise, the order would be taken as each nomination was made last week. So, it would be the vote on Councilmember Mnuchin's nomination, then the vote on Councilman Quintero's nomination, and the vote on Councilman Weaver's nomination, until one nomination receives three votes. So, that, it'll have to go in that order unless the council has the consensus to do it in another fashion.
That's okay with me.
Mr. Quintero had his hand up?
Right here.
Mr. Quintero?
Well, I would do a new, a new roll call, or whatever, what do you want?
Yeah, that's the way we did last one.
And it's, just so I can get clarification, as we get comments from each council member, is the request to do a roll call based on each nominee in turn, or do you want to do it in such a manner where each council member names the nominee that they would like to be the mayor?
Same way that was done last week.
Same way that was done last week, okay.
You stated that three votes, the first nominee to get three votes would be the mayor. That's not exactly the situation.
It would be majority votes cast.
First one to get the most number of votes, because the way we do it, which I disagree with, is that we can have multiple votes per candidate. So, it is possible that the three candidates running could get three votes, could get four votes, from the council, from the seated council members, correct?
I guess technically it's correct, but...
So, let's, let's clean that up, I mean, obviously, it's not a discussion now, but just to highlight the...
Process?
Yeah, the process and the paradox that could exist by having someone getting a majority of the votes, but losing the, losing the election of mayor if the other person gets four votes.
Correct.
So, I know we highlighted that, and we always have fun with this, so, that's all I wanted to say.
You're saying if someone gets three votes, we still continue through the rest of the votes?
No, no. At the, at the first, when somebody receives three votes, they become mayor. But again, the council is free also at that time to do a motion to reconsider the item, if somebody would like to reconsider. Majority, majority of votes cast passes, passes a motion, so, if someone...
And we should have councilmen only be able to vote for one person. I mean, if we have, being able to vote for two or three...
Any council member can vote for any way they want on each, on each nominee. So, if we do it like we did it last week, you know, as happened last week, a council member voted one way on the first motion and another way on the second, they're entitled to do that.
Well, we'll perhaps agendize this at some future date.
However, for clarification from the city attorney, if the first motion passes successfully and garners the majority, it renders the subsequent motions moot?
Correct, unless somebody who votes in the majority with that motion would like to reconsider.
Thank you. There is one card that was submitted from the public. It's for Herbert Milano.
Wait, we're past that.
I know, it's on the agenda, so, my suggestion is to let...
Okay, I don't have a card up here, but, okay.
Yeah, Mr. Quesatkins is running the meeting.
Mr. City Clerk, members of the city council, Mayor Friedman, and city staff, my name is Herbert Milano. To the members of the city council, the choice you face today is made easier by tradition. Recently, no incumbent running for office has been considered eligible to run as mayor, primarily because it gives the person an unfair advantage in the election. Mr. Quintero's promise not to run, as he stated last week, is reminiscent of this promise in 2005, not to run for the Assembly after he took office, while he was running for city council. It is not a statement to be believed. The second item is that the head of redevelopment becomes mayor. That's another part of the tradition. The third one is that a member with the highest votes basically is moved over to become mayor. So, you have all of these traditions for you to consider, but there is one more, and that is the issue of the dignity of the office, and how a person carries himself during the year, from the dais, as you have, Ms. Friedman, and outside as well. And that is where I have a problem with Mr. Weaver's repeated failure in the area of dignity. In 2006, while we were having a budget session, Mr. Weaver relegated all of the speakers to the very tail end of the discussion so that there would be no comments that would be presented or discussed by the city council back then. That is only one of the tamest of the examples that I could give with regard to Mr. Weaver's behavior in regard to dignity. This position and this representation to all of the stakeholders of Glendale deserves dignity as a condition of carrying this office for the rest of the public. I figure that if that is not acceptable, maybe we can move in the future to have these positions elected by the general public. I wish you the very best. I know that the decision, Ms. Friedman, probably rests with you. Best of luck. Thank you very much.
Madam City Clerk, I'd like to respond to Mr. Milano. What you did in here is absolutely mild, absolutely mild, compared to the dirt you write in Vanguard against me, my wife, my children, everything I do, filth. You can't support one single charge you make. You talk about dignity. Too bad you don't have a speck of it. Thank you.
As members of Najarian, did you wish to have the floor?
No, I was just raising my hand to indicate I also have been at the brunt of the poison pen of Mr. Milano.
Every week.
Every week. I think he gets me worse than you, Dave. I don't know.
So, yes, Councilmember Quintero?
Well, let me join in. Mr. Milano's never had any issues just distorting the truth and just making things up, never made any such a promise, 2005. But I do reiterate, I am not going to run for city council seat next year.
If there is no further discussion, we will take the nominations and the orders that they were proposed. If there is no clear consensus, then we can reopen the floor for new nominations after. Yes?
I would like to telegraph or explain my vote in advance, if possible. I don't know if you want me to do it now or after a nomination?
It's, you're entitled to, yeah, part of the comments, please.
Well, I'm sorry to have to come back and be perceived as the one who's breaking the tie. If I had been here last week, it wouldn't be that perception. I mean, all of our votes are equal, mine doesn't carry any more weight than anybody else. It's a very difficult vote, not because I think there's a lot resting on it, I think everybody who's been nominated will do a fine job, but it's difficult because I have to spend the next year working with everybody, and I'd like to be able to vote for each and every one of them. And by voting no, it seems like I'm not confident in them, which is the furthest thing from the truth. All three of the candidates that have been nominated have all been mayor, they've all proven themselves to be fine mayors, I have faith in each and every one of them as mayor. So, I don't have a no, per se, but I am going to vote for one, and only one, and the reason is because Mr. Quintero has been on council three terms, and he's been mayor twice, and he's asked for the courtesy of having a third term as mayor as his last year in office. He's promised he won't run again, and I take him at his word, and I feel that extending him this courtesy is just that, it's a courtesy that I would extend to anyone else on the dais. And since I know that Mr. Weaver and Mr. Mnuchin will both serve as mayor in the next couple of years, I personally don't see the harm in it, and I hope that none of them see it as a slight or a personal attack, because I want them each to know that they both have my full support when it's their turn to be mayor. So, that's my telegraphing. I'm sorry to take the, you know, maybe some of the suspense away from people.
So, the first nomination is for Councilmember Mnuchin.
I'd like to make comments as well. This, if Mr. Quintero is elected as mayor, it will be the first time since I remember that a council member has served twice during his term as mayor. It has never been done before. And words are cheap, actions are what matters, and to me, that's what matters. It is traditionally, it would have been my turn to be mayor this time, and I urge my colleagues to respect that. I've respected it in the past, I've voted for them in the past when their turns were up, and I do expect, and I don't expect it, it's apparent that there's already, the breaking vote has been pretty much cast already, but it is unfortunate, but I do look forward, we'll see, working with whoever the next mayor is, so.
And I'd like to add one comment.
Certainly.
Mayor Larry Zraven, one of our great mayors, served four times as mayor in 16 years. In my 16th year, I've served twice. I'm not voting for myself tonight. Okay? So, do I serve it? Who knows? That's up to my four colleagues. It'll be the same next year and the year after.
Councilmember Najarian?
Well, I would like nothing more than to continue working with Mr. Quintero on the city council for the years ahead. He's been a very stable, creative, and driving force, and I hope that regardless of what's said at this point, whether he's mayor or not, that he consider running for reelection next year. And I personally will, will be one who will not hold him to a, a pre-election promise.
Are there any other comments?
I have no comments. Let's take the vote.
First nomination is for Councilmember Mnuchin. Councilmember Friedman.
Can I abstain? I hate to vote no for someone who I think could, could be a fine mayor. You could abstain.
Madam Mayor, you could...
As a symbolic gesture.
How's it treated as a no?
Well, if it results in a tie, that, that particular vote would get carried over unless one of the subsequent motions carried, carried the day, so, the technical factors...
All right, I'll just, I don't want to cause more complications, I'll just vote no.
Councilmember Mnuchin?
Yes.
Councilmember Najarian?
Yes.
Councilmember Quintero?
No.
Councilmember Weaver?
No.
Next nomination, that motion did not carry, the next motion was a nomination for Councilmember Quintero. Councilmember Friedman?
Yes.
Councilmember Mnuchin?
No.
Councilmember Najarian?
No.
Councilmember Quintero?
Yes.
Councilmember Weaver?
Congratulations, Mayor Quintero.
That is an aye.
That's an aye.
Correct? Thank you. I now declare Councilmember Quintero the duly-elected mayor of the city of Glendale.
Well, I guess my first act as mayor is to proudly present Laura Friedman with a beautiful plaque, and it reads, "Laura Friedman, in appreciation for your distinguished leadership as mayor of Glendale, April 2011 to April 2012," and she will be gracing the hallway outside where all of the mayors are placed. Thank you very much, Laura.
Oh, no, no. Take back my vote.
In view of the audience members tonight, our hard-working GWP men and women, I'll spare you any public address, we have business to get to. All right? So, Mr. City Clerk, what's next?
Under presentation and appointments, congratulations, first of all, and at 3 a.m. is the agenda preview for the meetings of April 17, 2012.
Mayor Quintero, members of the city council, for the April 17 meeting for the Glendale Housing Authority, we don't have any business agenda items for that afternoon. We do have a Glendale Successor Agency business agenda item, and that's Director of Community Development. This is the overview of Oversight Board responsibilities and logistics. This is a report only. That afternoon also, we have a Glendale City Council and the Glendale Successor Agency. This is a joint public meeting. Director of Community Development, this is amendments to the downtown specific plan and Title 30 of the GMC relating to arts and entertainment district provisions, to Midbrand, last land use tables, district designation of city-owned properties, district renaming, and related text amendments. That evening for the Glendale City Council meeting to commence at 6:00 p.m., we have a number of consent items. Director of Public Works, this is the Safe Routes to School Improvement Project, Phase One. Director of Public Works, approval of the final map track number 71547 for a 60-unit new condominium subdivision located at 331 through 343 West Orange Street. Director of Community Services and Parks, this is the Mountain Dew and Catalina Verdugo Trails Construction Projects at the Glendale Sports Complex. Director of Public Works, this is the Los Angeles County Metropolitan Transportation Call for Projects Grant Funds for the Arroyo Verdugo Commute Manager System Project. Under action items, we have two items. Director of Public Works, banner request from the Glendale Sunrise Rotary for use of city poles and light standards. Directors of Community Services and Parks and Libraries, this is a discussion of the role of the Arts and Culture Commission. And lastly, we have a hearing. Director of Community Development, this is continued from March 13. This is an appeal of conditional use permit, case number PCUP 2011-016, for a property located at 1376 Baltimore Drive. And that concludes my report, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Next, please.
Next item is proclamation designating the week of April 8 through 14, 2012, as National Library Week.
Okay, I have a proclamation, which I believe is going to be accepted by John Steele, who's the president of the Friends of the Glendale Public Library. Proclamation reads as follows, "Whereas the Glendale Public Library will celebrate National Library Week, April 8, 14, 2012, the Friends of the Library is made up of over 800 members and raised over $40,000 for the library in the last year. The Friends of the Library sponsors the Authors, Artists, and Friends Lecture, which we hear about every week, and that series brings great authors to our community every month for free. Friends of the Library also funds the annual summer reading program that's helped over 8,000 schoolchildren maintain their reading skills. They also volunteer to sell donated books at the Central Library's Book Nook, and then also online sales at amazon.com." So, I want to personally thank all of the Friends of the Library, and proclamation is signed, "Laura Friedman, Mayor of the city of Glendale, and it's National Library Week." Thank you, Rocky, very much.
Mr. Mayor, just as a few words, I would first of all thank the city council for the support that you have given the library over the years, and, and the Friends as well. It's been my privilege, and I say my privilege in the past tense because I'm stepping down after eight years as president of the Friends of the Glendale Public Library. I told Cindy Cleary here and members of the board that even presidents of the United States don't serve any longer than eight years, so, but it's been, it's been a great time, I continue on, though, I will continue on the board. Relationship between the Friends of the Glendale Public Library and the city library staff, director and staff have been excellent. I could not ask for a better director of libraries than Cindy Cleary and her staff. They have been absolutely magnificent. And also, my fellow board members, I, as I say, I will continue to be on the board. I would certainly invite all of you to become a member of the Friends of the Glendale Public Library, those of you who are not there, I know already, our city clerk was at one time a member of the board, Yasmin Beers, a former library staff person. So, we have a close connection with the council and with staff, and our former mayor, now Laura Friedman, just thank you very much for your very kind remarks about the Friends of the Library and the contribution to the city. Much, much appreciated. So, again, I would just solicit your, your membership in the Friends, help us to continue to assist the library in its mission of being the best possible library in the, in the, in the United States. And I think we are, certainly if we were not there, we're very, very close to it. And again, my thanks for your support for the library and for, in anticipation of your continued support for the library in the years to come. Thank you very, very much.
If I could just have a few moments, I'm Cindy Cleary, Director of Libraries, and I just wanted to take a couple minutes in honor of National Library. Well, first of all, congratulations, Mayor Quintero, but I just wanted to take a couple minutes to acknowledge the good work of the Friends of the Library. First of all, John Steele, thank you very much for your eight years of service. We have some board members with us, Catherine Yamada, Chuck Waik is our community relations person and liaison to the Friends Board, Bree Mosley is our membership chair, and Anna Rundell is here with us as well. And I just have a quick, quick PowerPoint, if I could do it in a couple minutes. Thank you to John Steele, once again, eight years, he's done a marvelous job with the Board of Directors of the, of the Friends of the Library, through their promotion of the library, that's our quarterly newsletter, through advocacy for the library, they've all done a tremendous job. John's been at the helm. Fundraising, I think, we usually, they usually earn $40,000 to $50,000 a year that supports library services, and that's quite a remarkable accomplishment on the part of the Friends. They do it with the Book Nook at Central Library, where they sell used books, at our book sales, actually, actually, we're having a book sale this weekend on April 13 and 14 in our Central Library dock. We have 895 members in the Friends, and we have a goal this month of 1,200 members, so, if you're not a member already and you're interested in supporting the library, membership forms are available at the library, and we encourage your membership. Of course, you all know Leon Mayer, he advertises our, he promotes our author, artists, and friends. Where is Leon? Leon was supposed to be up here. Yeah.
Thank you, Cindy.
I missed you. Leon almost didn't come tonight because he said it should be our show, and I said, "He's got to come tonight." Anyway, our Authors, Artists, and Friends, which he, which he spearheads, and has done a marvelous job for how many years?
12 years.
12 years, that's pretty remarkable volunteerism. More of our Authors, Artists, and Friends, obviously, we have all sorts of prominent figures coming to the library, there's Ernie Borgnine. The Friends support our one book, One Glendale, we're going into our sixth, sixth year. We also support 50, I think, 65 to 70 community book groups through provision of, of library materials. The Friends help us preserve Glendale's history and our special collection. The Friends help us preserve Glendale's history in our special collections room. They support teen services. This is our teen council, and yes, we do have multiple copies of Hunger Games for anybody who's interested, both e versions and print versions. Our summer reading program, we could not do our summer reading program without the Friends of the Library. They support 8,000 children every summer to maintain their reading skills, and it's through their funding, probably $20,000 a year goes to that program. It's a remarkable program. And our computer literacy classes that are taught in English, Armenian, and Spanish, believe it or not, there are many people in our community that still do not know how to manipulate a mouse. Our 24/7 library, of course, any information about the library is available on our website. We have online resources that support careers, languages, learning different languages, New York Times, LA Times, Los Angeles Times, and multiple magazines are online. We have ebooks, e-music, e-audio. The Friends are all supportive of those collections. For those of you who don't know and have a smartphone, we have something called the Overdrive app, that you can access all our ebooks on that app. And coming soon, we will have an ebook cloud library, and we also will have our very own app for the Glendale Public Library. And that's all with the support of the Friends. Once again, we have a book sale coming up on April 13 and 14, and if you are a member of the Friends of the Library, you can come to a preview sale for the first hour of the sale. Some programs coming up. In addition to the Friends, and I'm almost done, but in addition to the Friends, we also have a support group called the Associates of Brand Library and Arts Center that support art, dance, and music programs. This weekend, I mean, talk about the power of volunteerism. This weekend and last weekend, they had a sale, they raised $17,000, which will go to the, to support the renovation of the Brand Library. That's in addition to a $10,000 check that they presented at council not too long ago. Upcoming events for the Associates, Grandma's Tattoos, The Forgotten Women of Armenian Genocide will be a film at the Central Library, another film program, The Desert of Forbidden Art. And of course, Brand Library is coming to Central Library on May 1. So please, everyone, support these great organizations by becoming a member of the Friends. Once again, we have a goal of 1,200 members. We now have close to 900. You can become a member of the Associates of Brand Library, and you can always call me for more information. So once again, thank you to this incredible effort on the part of the Friends and to John's eight years as president.
Next item is a presentation from the City of Burbank to Police Chief Ron DePampa and Jail Manager Juan Lopez, in appreciation for allowing the Burbank Police Department to utilize Glendale's police facility for 15 months during the reconstruction of their building.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and council members. My name is Scott Lachas. I'm the Chief of Police of the Burbank Police Department. On behalf of Mayor Telemontes, the City Council, and Mr. Flat, our City Manager, proud to be here tonight to say thank you. As you probably know, for about 10 and a half months late last year and this year, we had to utilize your jail facilities because our jail was closed. And I give a lot of credit to Chief DePampa and Mr. Lopez. They really established what I would term command emphasis to make this happen, and certainly, the guys on the ground that were working the jail did have that can-do attitude and really succeeded. And hopefully, this is a harbinger of things to come, where we can really consolidate, come together as a force multiplier, save money for both our cities, and provide superior services. I have here tonight some of our representatives to say thank you. Tom Angel, our Deputy Chief, Lieutenant Arman Diminjian, who supervised the jail, Captain Dennis Kremens, and Captain Ron Caruso. But from the bottom of our hearts, we really thank you for allowing this to happen. And again, there's so much that we owe to the Glendale Police Department, particularly Mr. Lopez and Chief DePampa. Thank you very much. Something to honor the occasion that hopefully you'll always have. There you go, Ron.
That is absolutely beautiful. We want to thank Scott so much for taking the time to do this. You know, to be successful in law enforcement today, you've got to stand as regional partners, and we could not ask for better partners than those folks over at Burbank PD. They're our brothers and sisters. We work hand-in-hand, day in and day out. This was but a small token of payback for us to help them out with their jail situation because they've helped us out so many times when we've been in need of assistance here. So we greatly appreciate that and look forward to working with them in the future. This is beautiful. I'm sure Juan has a place picked out for this.
Yes.
So, and our jail administrator, I'll have Juan Lopez say just a few words. We couldn't do this without him.
Oh, thank you, Chief. I'm Juan Lopez. I'm the City's Jail Administrator. I just want to thank the City Council, who came here a couple of months ago to ask for permission to be able to jump into this endeavor. We did so, and it turned out to be a fantastic opportunity to, again, consolidate operations and move forward with those efforts. So, thank you, Chief. Thank you, Command Staff. Really appreciate this recognition.
And we honestly do look forward to a good partnership because, as you know, we had the Tri-City Study, and certainly, Chief DePampa and I are going through that now to see where we can realize some consolidation and tremendous cost savings for both cities. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Chief.
There is a, the next item was added after the posting of the agenda. It's a proclamation designating the week of April 8 through the 14, 2012, as National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week.
Proclamation reads, "Across the nation in time of intense personal crisis and community-wide disasters, the first access point for those seeking all types of emergency assistance and homeland security information is the 9/11 Center. The Glendale Police and Verdugo Fire Communications Centers that receive these calls have emerged as the first and single point of contact for persons seeking immediate emergency assistance and are expected to multitask under emergency conditions. They should do it with compassion, accuracy, and professionalism throughout the year. This week celebrates and honors the thousands of men and women who respond to emergency calls, dispatch emergency professionals and equipment, and render life-saving assistance to the citizens, residents, and visitors of Glendale. And therefore, Laura Friedman, the Mayor of the City of Glendale, proclaimed April 8 to the 14 as National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week." Can't go down there. Oh, he may need to be lifted out on an EMT call, so.
I have a bet back. Mr. Mayor and members of the City Council, good evening. Don Wise, Executive Administrator of Verdugo Fire Communication Center. I want to take a couple of minutes to just say thank you for honoring our dispatchers and our call-takers at Verdugo Fire Communication Center. We work, obviously, hand-in-hand with Glendale Police Department and the Burbank Police Department and the 13 other agencies that we serve in the San Fernando and the San Gabriel Valley areas. Verdugo, last year, pre-calender year 2011, received about 155,000 emergency phone calls, and that translated into about 70,000 emergency dispatches for our fire departments. And I want to take an exception note to November 30 to December 1, where our folks did an exceptional job during that high-wind event. And normally, they would receive about 400 911 calls during that 48-hour period. We took in 3,400 911 calls during that period of time, and that translated into over 1,500 dispatches. And in one-hour period, they were receiving 250 phone calls at one hour, at the midnight hour. And that's exceptional work by our folks. And I have a couple of them here with me. I have Chief Godfrey with us today, and I have Linda Sims, one of our shift supervisors, been with us for 12 years, and Christina Kazazi, a newly-promoted shift supervisor for four years. And so we're glad to have them here tonight. And I want to turn this over to our Chief, Ron DePampa.
Thank you, Don. And we echo, you know, fire sentiment as well for the Police Department. These folks are our lifeline. They not only handle the initial 911 calls coming in, but they handle all the radio traffic that occurs. And during emergent situations, it can be absolutely chaotic in that communication center. I don't know how they do it, but they do it with excellence, day in and day out, year round. So all too often, we don't get an opportunity to say thank you to them. But I also want to use this opportunity to introduce our new communications technology administrator, and she comes to us by way of the Beverly Hills Police Department, where she was one of the division commanders there, actually a second-in-command position. And we enticed her away from Beverly Hills, told her Glendale was a much better place to work, and she's a Glendale resident. So we are very, very fortunate to have Teresa Goldman join us here just recently as a new member of our leadership staff, and I'd like to allow her to introduce some of her folks that are here today.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Congratulations, Mayor. Thank you for the introduction, Chief. As he said, I come by way of the Beverly Hills Police Department, but I have a background in communications. I was a dispatcher when I was 18 years old. So I'm very familiar with what these fine people back here are tasked with doing. And I'd like to just share with you some of the very impressive statistics. Last year, they processed over 203,000 calls for service, 55,000 of them being 911 calls. 98% of those 911 calls were answered within 10 seconds. And you can imagine the relief that the citizens feel when they get one of our fine dispatchers on the line, they process the call for service, and with composure, with respect, with courtesy. And it's a very difficult thing to do, as the chief mentioned, processing these kind of emergency calls is not something that everybody can do and is skillful at, and they managed to do that. So with that, I'd like to introduce Mary Cole. She's a shift supervisor. Jennifer Ferguson and Erin Anderson, they both are long-tenured dispatchers here. Just by way of process, they handle all the 911 calls, wireless and landline, identify what the problem is, dispatch police services. If it's a fire call, they transfer to these people. So there's a lot of collaboration that goes on, even though they may wear different uniforms, they're really kind of working together in concert. And I think it's important to acknowledge all of them for the great job that they do. Thank you.
Thank you. Any comments?
On behalf of the City Council, let me thank you all for your dedication and your service and your professionalism. Thank you so much.
Next is City Council and Staff Comments.
Yes, I would like to take this opportunity to congratulate my good friend, Mr. Quintero, Mayor Quintero at this time. Me and Mr. Quintero go back a long ways. He was one of the individuals who nominated me to the Glendale Chamber's Board of, Glendale Chamber of Commerce Board back in 1994, 95, a couple of years ago.
Few years.
So we've, as friends, we've had our ups and downs, but I certainly don't consider today a down. I consider it positive that my friend, Mr. Quintero, has become mayor, and I look forward to a fruitful year coming up, working with him to benefit the community. So congratulations again, Mr. Quintero.
Thank you, Mr. Weaver.
Yeah, some of my colleagues have made comments, and I feel the same way about, we've got to clean up this mess, the way of electing the city mayor each year. I think it'd be worthwhile agendizing a discussion, how we can codify this election, to take any potential animosity, like former Mayor Friedman said about feeling uncomfortable. It was codified, so there is a process that takes the politics clear out of it. I think that'd be worthwhile. At least, I think it's worth having a discussion to find out if we can arrive at some solution, if there's a second to do that. If not, we'll just go on with the politics as usual.
I would second that. I think we're, we can look at the whole issue and make it.
There's got to be a better way.
Friedman.
First, let me congratulate Mayor Quintero. I know he'll do a fine job, he always has in the past. I wanted to talk about my little trip last week. Some of you know. Certainly, if you've been following the mayor issue, you'll know that I wasn't here last week. I was in Korea, visiting our sister cities. Every two years, no, every three years, our sister city of Gosong has this big dinosaur expo, which is, it's kind of like the dinosaur Disneyland in Korea, and it's a very big deal for them. And they've invited the Glendale mayor every year, and every year, every three years, the Glendale mayor has gone, and I was very happy to accept the invitation. It was unfortunate it coincided with the mayor's election, but that's the day they had their grand opening, so it couldn't be avoided. And also, a week after I went, right now, we have a group of Glendale students who came, who also went to Gosong and kind of followed in the footsteps that I was on. So I was able to see where they were staying and visit the high schools, or the middle school that they're going to be visiting, and talk to the students about the American students coming. And I'll tell you, those kids in Korea were so excited, they were practically in tears. They don't get a lot of Americans visiting them. These are more rural areas, Gosong and the other place they'll be visiting, Bowen. And so I know they're going to get a very warm reception, and those kids in Korea speak pretty much fluent English by middle school, so it's really incredible, and they'll be able to communicate with them because of that. So I know they're going to have a really great trip. And I wanted to just show a couple slides so that you could see what I was doing when I was there. This is the grand opening of the dinosaur expo. That's at the entrance to the theme park, and you can see some dinosaurs in the background. Interestingly, Gosong also has a sister city in Australia, and they had one of the mayors and one council member there. They also had representatives from Costa, I always mess it up, Contra Costa. For some reason, I have trouble saying that.
Contra Costa.
Contra Costa, up in Northern California. Now I'm going to get emails from people from Contra Costa about how I mangled the name. They had a representative from there because, like us, they have an MOU with their community college, the same way Gosong has an MOU with Glendale Community College. And there was also a representative from the community college in Texas, which has like 100,000 students. It's incredible, and eight campuses. So this was a very big event, as you can see. Next slide. And this was the nighttime at the dinosaur expo opening, and there were probably, I don't know, 5,000 or 6,000 people in the crowd, and they had all kinds of performers. So this was, you know, this is a very big event that they have. Next. This is the, this is Governor Lee, who's one of the contenders for the presidency in Korea, who's been to, who, Councilmember Najarian has met, and he's a big Glendale supporter. In fact, he promised us that he thinks that Glendale's the number-one city in the USA. And this is me presenting him with a poster of Glendale. And on the left is Chang Lee from the Glendale Sister City Association. Next slide. This is in Bowen, which is a city that wants to be not a sister city of ours, although they would love that, but a friendly relations city. And this is a very interesting area up in the mountains. It's a rural county. And one of the reasons they're so interested in Glendale is because they heard about GCC and what we've been doing with some of the cities in Korea with Glendale Community College. They're very, all of Korea is very focused on education. It's a huge priority for the entire nation, for everyone in the nation. And this rural area has not only built an amazingly cutting-edge, high-tech middle school for their kids, which has dormitories, because rather than bust the kids in every day, which from a rural area is more difficult, they come in on Monday and stay through Friday, and they have these beautiful dormitories. But they've set $10 million aside and put it into an account, and from the interest from that account, they're going to offer scholarships to their students. And they would like a number of those scholarships to be guaranteed at Glendale Community College. Now, this is very beneficial for the community college because, unlike California students, these students are paying full tuition, which adds a lot of money into the pot that then can be used for our local students. So for revenue for GCC, it's an important source of revenue, and of course, it also adds to the diversity of our community college. So it's really a win-win for everybody, and something that GCC is very enthusiastic about. If we can go back to the slides. So, no, if you can go back one. So that's, no, forward. Okay, that slide, the people that you see that I'm speaking to are the employees of Bowen. So they took everyone out of City Hall, which you see behind them, and they made all the poor employees listen to a bunch of speeches from me and from the mayor. But we had a very nice reception there. And they also very generously, when they found out about the American students coming, they invited them to go and spend a few days in Bowen. And since they have a dormitory at their school, it was really a wonderful opportunity for our students, so they're going to be going there as well. And having seen the dormitories, let me assure the parents of those students that they're really going to get a kind of two-day educational experience that's rare to find in this country. Next slide. These are some of the students at Bowen who were so thrilled to be meeting American students. Next slide. And that, by the way, is the mayor of Bowen, very nice man, Mayor Park. Next slide. And just in case you think that it's all just fun and games, they put me to work. This is me and Mayor Park and Chang Lee from the Sister City Association, making kimchi. So now I know how to make kimchi, and they actually put this kimchi back on the production line, so someday you could be eating some kimchi that I had a hand in making. That's all of the slides. I want to thank the Sister City Association for year after year sponsoring these trips for Glendale mayors. They're very, very valuable. They're very, very valuable. They're very valuable for us as mayors to see what other cities are like in other countries and how they're managed. I find it fascinating to be able to see what's done right, what I think we're doing better, what they're doing better, ideas that I can bring back to my city. Certainly, in terms of their commitment to education, I think America has some catching-up to do. But these relationships are going to be very beneficial, and one of the things that all these cities are interested in doing is having a real exchange program with our high schools, to where our high school students will go for a semester or even a year to study in their schools in Korea. So I'll be talking to GCC about, to, sorry, Glendale Unified about this, and hopefully we can set it up. I think with our dual immersion language program in Korean that we have, we've got a whole group of elementary school kids that are going to be graduating into high school who are going to be fluent in Korean, who can go to Korea and study in Korean and have a really incredible, unique opportunity. So thanks again to the Sister City Association, to Alex Wu and Chang Lee, and all of the members for making this possible year after year for the mayors. It's really a very valuable program. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to make some abbreviated comments on the COMPASS Award. That is the Southern California Association of Government, SCAG. Thanks to the hard work of the planning staff and parks and just a number of public works, just a number of divisions, the city of Glendale was awarded a COMPASS Award, actually a presidential award, for some of the things we've done in planning, and specifically with road diets and bicycling and active transportation. But I think I'll wait till next week, so maybe we can show some slides and kind of talk about it a little bit more. But there are two people sitting here tonight that I want to specifically commend, and that's Mike Nielsen from our staff, and Colin Bogart, who was kind of on loan from the LA Bicycle Coalition. And they were really instrumental in pushing this through, as well as Mark Sturdivan, one of our park members. But anyway, next week, we'll really flesh it out and let the public know. But it's, I mean, SCAG, as I've talked about in the past, counties of San Bernardino, Riverside, Ventura, LA, Orange County, and Imperial County. So you can imagine, there's, there were lots of people that were competing, lots of agencies, organizations competing for this award, and Glendale received the top award. Thank you very much, Colin and Mike. Next.
Next item is the Consent Calendar, including minutes. Following a routine that may be acted upon by one motion, a member of council or the audience requesting separate consideration may do so by making such requests before motions are proposed.
Mayor, move the consent calendar at five.
Second. Roll call.
Councilmembers Friedman.
Yes.
Lenukian.
Yes.
Njarien.
Yes.
Weaver.
Hi.
Mayor Quintero.
Yes. Next, please.
Next item is Oral Communications. This is a three-minute event announcement portion. We will revisit the full five-minute portion at the conclusion of all city business.
Okay, I have Dottie Sharkey, followed by Carol Bruschow.
I'll be quick. Congratulations, Mayor Quintero. I'm Dottie Sharkey with the Glendale Parks and Open Space Foundation. Just a reminder that we're having our second annual Verdugo Mountain 10K Trail and Hike in beautiful Brand Park, and on May 6, Sunday, May 6, and it's to benefit Parks and Parks Programs. And the other thing, we're actually 20% ahead of registrations this year, at the same time last year, so it's pretty exciting. And I have some other exciting news. I'm also very proud that Glendale Memorial Hospital is now our presenting sponsor, and they've been very generous and very excited, and they've actually have teams from the hospital. I was with a group of emergency room nurses and their training, so, and Artie, our city clerk, will be there.
I'll be bringing up the rear once again this year.
It's okay. You did great. So we hope to see you there. Okay, thanks.
Okay, thank you. Carol Bruschow.
Thank you very much. Good evening, Mayor Quintero, City Council people. I don't know if you can see this. I'm here to let everyone know, okay, I'm here to let everyone know about Northwest Glendale, oh, I am representing Northwest Glendale Homeowners Association.
Who's on the picture?
Um, yes. I'm here to let everyone know that next Wednesday, April 18, Northwest Glendale Homeowners will be holding its annual meeting with, as guest speaker, our new city manager, Scott Ochoa, and everyone in the community is invited to attend. We are also hoping, it's not yet confirmed, to have a member of the Glendale Police Department address the concerns about the recent burglary problems, and possibly a former board member of Northwest Glendale may give a brief synopsis about the camphor tree controversy on Bruce. So it'll be an exciting meeting. There'll be refreshments. It's going to be held at 7:30 at New Life Christian Church, which is at 1020 West Kenneth. It's at the corner of Bruce and Kenneth, and it's open to members as well as non-members, so everybody's invited. And I'll be back next week, I think, to once more remind you. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next.
Next item on the agenda, 8A, is Chief of Police, regarding AB 109 Public Safety Realignment Act. That 8A1 is a motion to note and file a report.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, and congratulations, and members of council. We're here to give you an overview of certainly AB 109 and realignment, and how it relates to the overall reform of the California State Prison. There's the good, the bad, and the ugly, and we're going to share it all with you tonight. And if you have questions, we would invite you to ask, because that's really what we want to do, is clarify for you exactly what's going on. A little good news. Actually, today, we probably got our worst repeat offender in custody this morning, and that was a renegade La Crosse Bear that had been breaking into garages. So obviously, community supervision wasn't working for this bear. So we've revoked his parole, and he's off to the big house, actually safely back into the wilderness, far enough away. But there's a little good news in that although state prison reform actually began in fiscal year 1011, and we anticipated with the non-revocable parolees that it was going to impact our parolee population and our crime rate, and it didn't materialize as quickly as we expected. So the good news is that our residential parolee population has remained pretty stable, number one, and number two, we ended fiscal year 1011 with a 7% decrease in Part I crime overall, and that's good. What the map depicts is that we do have about 300 resident parolees, and that includes early-release, non-revocable parolees, and the new community supervision releases, and they're dispersed relatively-
What does that mean, "non-revocable"? Sorry to interrupt.
Well, and I will explain to you. That means that they do, they're not under supervision, they don't have conditions to be responsible to, and they can't, they can't be violated and sent back to state prison. It's essentially kind of a get-out-of-free jail card, and that's the way it's worked. The issue about our own population that is important to know is that we do a relatively good job of managing those that reside within our boundaries, and by doing so, and actively staying in touch with this population, we can kind of take them out of the equation to a large degree. And that's good. That helps. So that's the good news. But moving on, as we go to the next slide, we'll talk a little bit about how this all came about. Let me go back one. This really started, two things drove prison reform. Certainly, the economic recession and the impact of the state budget required drastic cuts at the state level. Unfortunately, CDCR, Community, or the Correctional Department, and that whole area with the state prison system was first and foremost on the cutting block and had to eliminate about 18,000 inmates in order to help balance the budget. Concurrently, there was a federal court order for the state prisons to reduce their population by as many as 33,000 inmates. This was largely due to overcrowding issues and inadequate medical services. As you note on the slide, that with these, about one-third, we'll always come back to the county of Los Angeles. We are responsible as a county for putting about one-third of those individuals into state prison, so naturally, about one-third will come back through any kind of release, whether it be normal parole or any one of these different type of release models. So this is in addition to what we see coming back to LA County anyway, which is about 21,000 coming back from the state prisons annually. The difference is, is that in the first phase of this prison reform, we had the non-revocable parolees. So this, again, is no supervision, no conditions, no reentry assistance, and no possibility of revocating their status if they violate any conditions. Now, as part of this group, it was basically targeting those that were deemed as low-risk. However, within that category, it included criminal street gang members. They were eligible, so they'd come back without any worry about being violated if they, if they ran afoul of their conditions. It included stalking and domestic violence offenders with no stay-away orders or notice to victims that they were coming back. So we were quite concerned about this initial phase, and initially redirected considerable resources to deal with it, and I think we were pretty effective in our city. I'm not sure that the rest of the county was as effective, but we had fairly good results. So that was Phase 1, and that was really an opening of the back doors of the prison and getting people out in an early-release fashion. The next phase that came along was implemented October 1, 2011, known as Assembly Bill 109. And this is really the closing of the front doors and restricting those individuals that would traditionally go to state prison as a consequence for their criminal behavior. And what it mandates is that now for certain crimes, and there's over 260 felony crimes that are identified as nonviolent, nonserious, non-high-risk sex offender crimes that have to be housed at the local level, at the county level. And we call those the 3-N felons. And this is really the population that's truly starting to impact our public safety today, largely because we have had a significant loss of state prison accountability for these types of felony crimes. Now, in addition to that, those that are, that do get out of state prison normally through the normal parole process, if they violate the conditions of their parole, they no longer go back to state prison. Instead, they have to be dealt with here locally as part of what we call this community supervision model, which is, in most counties, placed under the probation department, and that's where it resides with LA County. Now, there was some initial funding for the first year. It was partially funded. This was largely due to some transfer of Department of Correction funds, as well as the state absconding with some VLF general fund revenue in the 11th hour from the cities. And what it did, it provided partial funding that was split between the Sheriff's Department and county probation, the sheriffs for incarceration, and county probation for monitoring and supervision. However, the key issue that we need to make you aware of is that there is no funding whatsoever for frontline local law enforcement, nothing. And as you, I'm sure, noted in the staff report, we have already redirected about $650,000 worth of policing resources just to deal with this problem. Now, part of the issue that we take exception with is that there's a notion out there, and the way it was kind of sold in the state, is that the 3-N felons are really low-risk, and that is really a fallacy. I think most law enforcement professionals would tell you, and I'm sure if Scott Lachas was still here, he'd join me in my assessment, that we're missing the point there, because by the time an individual gets to state prison, they have earned their way there. You don't get to state prison on a first-time offense unless it's so heinous that it just mandates it. So what we find is that by the time they get to state prison, they will have already suffered five to six local felony convictions before they ever get to state prison. So we're dealing with career criminals.
Chief, let me ask a quick question. In fact, the 3-Ns, I assume they're talking about their last offense, right?
That is correct.
It doesn't mean that their previous offense wasn't a violent felony, just your last offense.
That is correct. The way AB 109 is structured, it deals only for that last offense for which they are incarcerated, and ignores the fact that there'll be an extensive criminal history that will get them there, to state prison. So that is absolutely correct. The research clearly shows that the career criminal nature of this population is such that 70% will reoffend within the first three years after being released from state prison, and they will have committed 12 to 15 crimes before they're actually caught. So the problem is quite significant. Another noteworthy fact is that of that 70% that reoffend, 1 in 5 will be for a violent crime, including murder. Some other interesting facts that we're seeing borne out with this population coming out under AB 109 is that over 50% will have mental health issues, and over 50% will have substance abuse issues. So we get this population released back into local communities without local funding in a perfect storm environment. You know, needless to say, we're dealing with a severe economic recession, record-high unemployment rates, and law enforcement agencies across the state have reduced resources and services. So it makes it a very difficult problem to deal with. That's the bad. Now, let's get into the ugly part, and this is what we're seeing coming to fruition recently. Just by way of example, using that data, using that research, we know that every 5,000 felons released back into our area will commit 45,500 new crimes, and that 9,000 of those, or 20%, will be violent felonies. Well, you really look at what the net impact between early release and AB 109 is, and that's about 24,000 additional felons coming back into LA County the first year realignment. And what it translates to is that what are we going to do with them? Where are we going to put them? We know that our county jail facilities are at maximum capacity, so what it really means is commuting sentences and putting criminals back on the street. And let me give you an illustrative example of that, even before we get into what transpired last week. About a month or so ago, we arrested two burglars in La Crosse. Actually, we got an astute neighbor called, they were climbing out the window. We were able to go in pursuit of them and set up a perimeter, actually get them into custody. We took them to court. Obviously, they're filed on for felony burglary. Under the AB 109 issue, they went to county jail, and they served a total of two weeks. And so they're right back out. So this is the nature of the beast that we are now forced to deal with. So we are starting to see, not only do we have the anecdotal stories along the way that are indicating that, you know, criminal enterprises, be it outlawed street gangs or organized crime or prison gangs, are understanding that the accountability, the state prison accountability for committing these crimes is gone. So we're seeing the method of operation starting to shift and focus more towards property crimes such as residential burglary, auto theft, those types of crimes. crimes such as residential burglary, auto theft, those types of crimes. For the first time for the city of Glendale, in the last two months, we've seen residential burglaries, commercial burglaries, robberies, and auto thefts go up anywhere from 10% to 20%. And this is a radical change from what we've seen in terms of a rather stable crime rate or descending crime rate over the last decade. So this is the first time we're really seeing the change. And I think last week was really illustrative of the problem that we're going to be dealing with as this goes on into the future. And you see on the slide, this is just from one week, and we had several significant residential burglaries that fortunately for us, we had, again, people that are paying attention that called. At the same time, we're using a very robust crime analysis system to kind of predict where these crimes are occurring and will occur. And so we had resources in the area. We ended up fortunately getting seven people in custody last week, and we found that they are very...
I didn't want to interrupt you mid-sentence, but...
Please do.
So given this revolving door, and given that they're not going to go to state prison because their crime isn't violent, what's going to happen to these people that you arrested?
Well, with most of the three-N crimes, what happens is they have to be processed locally at the county level. If convicted, if there's no other special enhancements that would warrant going to state prison like the use of a gun in the commission of a felony, they'll go to county jail.
How long will they go?
Well, here's the issue, is that without the jail space we needed in this county, they have to use a different style of sentencing that has been termed split sentencing, where they'll do part of the time in county jail and part of the time under community supervision, or they may do alternative sentencing. So they may, instead of doing jail time, they may be assigned under house arrest, they may be assigned to a fire camp crew, or maybe as a trustee at a sheriff's station washing cars. It's just a whole different ballgame as to how we're dealing with this criminal element.
Generally, how much time are they going to be doing one of those things?
Typically, what we're seeing is that most N-three crimes will do less than 180 days.
So these people that you've arrested, I mean, there's very little penalty. Why even arrest them?
Well...
That's rhetorical. You don't really have to answer that.
And that is certainly a logical question to ask, but the issue is that we've got to do everything we can to create a strong deterrence in this community, and maybe if we arrest them enough, and they know if they're going to come to Glendale, they're going to get arrested, maybe they'll go elsewhere. And we'll do our best to ensure that they know, if you come to Glendale, you're going to be held accountable for your crimes. Now, part of that...
These people aren't going off to prison. Let's be clear about that. These people that you're arresting who are committing all these burglaries are not doing prison time like they would have two years ago or...
Exactly, and I can't predict exactly what's going to happen with this group. What we do know about this group, they have extensive criminal histories, some are on parole and recently released, some are on probation. We do know that there's affiliations with some very serious South Central LA gangs. Most of these individuals came from South Central LA, Compton-Inglewood area, into Glendale. And this really speaks of the problem, and what I want to make sure everybody understands is that we tend to worry about only that which comes back to reside in Glendale. You know, who are those felons coming back to live in Glendale? And that is really not the issue. The issue is that it's a regional issue. We have to be concerned with what's coming back to LA County specifically, and the reason being is cities like Glendale, Burbank, Pasadena represent a very attractive, target-rich environment, and we have easy access with the freeway system. They can get in, commit their crimes, get back out, and largely escape. So this is something that we have to deal with on a much larger regional issue. Suffice it to say, while I can't predict specifically what will happen with these individuals, the example that I just gave you with the two burglars coming out a window that we had to extend a tremendous amount of policing resources to get them in custody, they served two weeks for felony burglary. They served two weeks. So that's, again, the nature. And there's over 260 felony crimes that no longer are eligible for state prison incarceration. They have to be held at the county level, and therein lies the problem. Let me tell you, this is the latest information that we have from the implementation on October 1st to the end of January. This is a three-N felon post-release community supervision. That means they've been released from prison, not under normal parole, not with parole supervision or conditions, but to the county under what is called community supervision. And under the probation department, I know they're doing their best, but it's rather ill-defined and not very successfully managed at this point, but we've already had 4,482 released in this time period, so we're seeing about 1,000 a month, which is what we predicted. Interesting, 1,316 have already been rearrested for new crimes, so when we talk about that recidivism rate, we're seeing it immediately surface. The probation department of this population, using their own assessment model, has assessed 64% as high risk for reoffending, 34% as medium risk, and only 4% as low risk. So what the state is defining as low risk versus what we're defining as low risk at the local level is not one and the same. Also, a large number are assessed with high needs for immediate mental health and substance abuse treatment, so this is a concern. On the custody side, remember now, those that we can no longer send to state prison, we've had 3,753 sentenced as local three-N felons, so instead of going to state prison, they have to go to county jail or split sentences or some kind of alternative sentencing. We've had 783 parole violators. I mean, these are folks that are actually on state parole that have violated their conditions. Remember, they can no longer go back to state prison. They have to be now kept locally as well. And interesting, despite all these thousands, only four have been sentenced to jail for violating their community supervision conditions. So you can see that this whole community supervision and holding this group accountable is not really there. So again, the impact to the county jail population and the capacity, split sentencing and alternative sentencing are the current means to deal with this population, and we are seeing both in real-time examples and in expert opinions from those who work the jail facilities that the typical sentence will be less than 180 days. So what are we doing? Just real quick to give you an idea of some of the main strategies, obviously, we immediately redirected resources to monitor our own population here in Glendale. We have about 300 living in Glendale, so we actively go visit them and ensure that they're living up to their conditions, and more importantly, let them know that we know who they are and where they are. And that's been very important. Regional supervision and enforcement, we've just are finishing an agreement with the county, largely thanks to County Supervisor Mike Antonovich and his office for working with us and working with probation. They are going to be assigning probation officers to our facility to work with Glendale PD and Burbank and Pasadena in a tri-city program to really get active hands-on monitoring and supervision of this population in the tri-city area. So we anticipate that coming to implementation here very soon. We're also working with the county to look at community-based organizations to provide the services that we need, you know, related to reentry, job training, housing assistance, drug and alcohol counseling, those types of things. We feel, even though the county has received a little bit of money for them to do that, we feel that if we can subcontract here with local community providers, we can do a better job locally. So we'll be working on that. You're well aware of the effort we've put into crime analysis and how that's paying off in the cases that we had this week. We literally had plainclothes undercover resources in those neighborhoods when those burglaries happened, and that's one reason we were so rapidly able to get on these suspects. And even though it resulted in pursuits and containments, we were able to get them into custody. So we use that all the time. And then technology support, how do we harden the target? This week, we cut the ribbon on our DNA lab, and it'll give us the opportunity to apply DNA technology to property crimes, which will be a tremendous asset, not only in terms of holding this population accountable for crimes, but just in making our efforts more effective. Obviously, we have minimal resources, and the more effective we can use technology to identify these people and get them into custody, the better off we're going to be. Again, the more we can do, the greater the deterrent. And then finally, I can't underestimate the role of the community, and you know, we've made great strides here. As I said, these incidents that occurred last week resulted from 911 calls from community members that saw something suspicious, and instead of just brushing it off, you know, they took the time to call, and it made all the difference in the world. Those relationships are absolutely critical for us to be able to do our job effectively. So we're asking the public to stay informed. Obviously, we're running our area command system. We hold town hall meetings out in the neighborhoods that people can go to and interact with their area commanders and find out what's going on firsthand, or you can log on to crimemapping.com and get almost real-time crime reports for your area, for your neighborhood, and find out what's happening. Neighborhood watches are a wonderful tool. I tell you, we've gone from a small handful two years ago to over 75 today, and those neighborhood watches, it's what helps generate the awareness and get people paying attention to what's going on. If you'd like more information about how to start a neighborhood watch, you can go to our police department website at www.cigglendale.ca.us/polic, and you'll get all the information there about how to do that. People can also report suspicious activity anonymously if they wish. You can go to glendalecrimestopper.com, and you can report electronically, or there's phone numbers there if you are seeing suspicious activity in your neighborhood and you want to let us know in a completely anonymous fashion, you can do so. And a couple other great tools that we have that really helped us catch the burglars up in La Cressena that we told you about that were coming out the window and seen by some residents, and that's our citizen email alerts, www.glendaleapb.com. And you can go in there, log in, and you will get email, we'll send out email blasts when we have breaking news or crimes, and that's what happened in La Cressena, is that even though we lost the suspects in a larger perimeter, we sent out this email blast to the neighborhood watch up there, and lo and behold, someone picked it up and was able to direct us to a house that they had seen some potential suspects go into the backyard, and we were able to catch them. So it's a great tool. And then also, if you want to get phone alerts, you can go to glendalewaterandpower.com. You can sign up your landline house phone or your cellphone to get those phone blasts that go out. So really, what we need to do is continue our efforts to work with the community, to work as partners, to work regionally, to harden the target as best we can against this group. But the bottom line is, is our challenges are going to be great. We're seeing the change in crime trends, and it will not go away anytime soon. The AB 109 was partially funded for the first year. There is no funding plan going years out, and currently, there's no plan to fund local law enforcement efforts. So we're kind of on our own in terms of trying to deal with this issue. So we wanted to bring that to your attention, and I know there's a lot of confusion about this public policy, and if you have any questions, we'd love to be able to respond to them.
Questions or comments, Mr. Najarian?
Thank you, Chief, for that very informative report. But Chief, how do you respond to the Herbert Mulanos and the Barry Allens outsiders who come into our community and criticize the city council for maintaining an overstaffed police department? They call it bloated. They call it excessively-staffed. That we should immediately start to reduce police because we are a safe city. How do you respond to that? Are they right?
No, they are not right. They are wrong in their assessment about the staffing of the police department. When you look comparatively, our staffing ratios are some of the lowest in Southern California, and you add to the fact that, to the fact that over the recession, we've lost 18 sworn positions. Our sworn management staff is the exact same numbers and positions as it was in 1952. We are extremely lame, but I will have to say that our agency and the men and women of the department do a very good job. I've told you before, we hire the missionaries, not the mercenaries. They believe in what they do. They believe in the mission, and they surprise me day in and day out with the quality and level of work that they do and the level of dedication and effort that they put forth a day in and day out. But make no mistake about it, we are understaffed to police a city the size of Glendale, and I would recommend, as your police chief, I would tell you that when times get better, one of your first objectives should be to increase law enforcement staffing so we can effectively deal with the issues that confront us. We have significant challenges that lie ahead.
Chief, I was very impressed last week with the special enforcement detail. Two days, two, three days in a row where they made those arrests and went door-to-door, essentially, searching for the suspects, aided by some of the officers in our room today, to make those arrests and continued to do so and work so diligently. So congratulations on that.
Thank you. Thank you.
Ms. Friedman?
First, Chief, thank you very much for a comprehensive presentation. It was very illuminating. I hope that a lot of the public has a chance to see this, and thank you to you and your department for the work that you've been doing in catching these criminals over the past few weeks. I know it hasn't been easy, but I just want to say that I've never seen such an amount of crime in this community since I've lived here. It's really astounding, the number of break-ins, breaking and entry in homes and in cars and other types of crimes that we're seeing across this community. And I know that these are complicated issues and that our folks in Sacramento have their challenges, but I just don't see how this can possibly be a solution. I think what's going on is criminal. The decisions that have been made to basically decriminalize felonies. When I grew up, I was always taught that if you do a crime, you do the time, and clearly in California, that's not what's happening anymore, and I think it's an outrage. It's an outrage that these people who are multiple felons and committed crime will be out in two weeks. There's no incentive for them to stop, and there's no real punishment or accountability. And just saying that they're not violent, even though clearly, as we've seen, that their past crimes may very well have been violent, doesn't cut it. And I hope that a lot of people watch this and understand what's happening and understand that these recent break-ins are a direct result of decisions that have been made. And I hope that they do contact our representatives in Sacramento and let them know how they feel about this, because I really can only assume that they didn't think this would be the consequence, but it clearly is the consequence. I find it ironic that the funding that they promised from the state, they ended up taking from the cities to give back to the cities. I think that's really incredible, and that there's no funding set out for the future really worries me. really worries me. So I'm glad that we have such a dedicated police force, but as many arrests as you do, if there's no penalty, I just don't see where that leads. I hope people hear this. I hope that they let their feelings be known to the people who can make a difference because of all the things that I've heard in my time on council, I have to say this worries me the most. It honestly does. I think this is really, could be a real crisis and something that we need to deal with now and find a way to deal with now.
And I think your assessment is absolutely correct. In all my years in law enforcement, this is the most concerning issue that I've had to deal with. I've always said that this is bad public policy for which the constituents of California will pay for for years to come. And it's just a situation where if you lose accountability for these felony crimes, then it's going to be hard to fight the war. I believe that it's the constitutional responsibility of the state to provide an effective penal and correctional system. And to abrogate that back to local communities as an underfunded or unfunded mandate is insanity, in my opinion.
If I may, again, I also want to join my colleagues in thanking you for the presentation. I just would like to get a copy of the presentation, if I may.
Certainly.
So that I can make similar presentations to the community.
Absolutely. And we're available.
Thank you.
Myself and my staff are available to make any presentations.
And neighborhood watch programs, those are programs that work and the community should be more involved in their safety.
Councilman Menucha, absolutely. It is a force multiplier, much like using crime analysis and the technology, having the eyes and ears of the community out there and the willingness to find out what's going on in their neighborhoods and call when things don't look right. As I noted, these cases that we just showed you would not have happened but for the fact that community members took the time to pay attention and call us when things didn't look right. So that's a tremendous asset.
I just wanted to comment, Chief. In my almost 73 years in my hometown, this is obviously the worst I've ever seen and it's going to get worse before it gets better. When you go to the polls remembering people, doesn't matter what city, you elected the representatives up there, including this governor, that is trying to balance a state budget at the expense of the local agencies. Cutting the prison, whatever population, that's to help them. There is no caring about what is happening down here. We get unfunded mandates in bad economic times and we're supposed to figure it out. Talk to your local reps and ask them why they have done, to every city in this state, what they have done. They won't be able to give you a good answer. And it's sad that we're in this situation and obviously, you're not going to turn it around tomorrow, not in these times. Where are you going to get more resources, trained? Even police officer, it takes a year or more to train them, just to get them out on the street as a rookie. We can't even staff up to begin to do what we should be doing in this city. And we just have to hope and pray that the few officers we do have out there, using technology and the eyes and ears of this community, can keep a lid on it, try to keep a lid on it. I can't say that I'm that hopeful considering what you're showing us in those slides, but good luck, Chief. You know, this council's behind you in anything you need.
We absolutely know that and we appreciate the support of council.
Thank you, Chief. I want to recognize Captain Rock and Captain Povolitis, who are in the back of the room. I agree with everyone on the dais. It's really a ridiculous situation. I mean, the idea that you're going to do a residential burglary, you're going to break into someone's home and serve two weeks, that just boggles the imagination. I just can't get over it. And don't think that guys and women that are predisposed to do that aren't aware of that. They obviously are aware that they're not going to go away for eight years or 10 years or 12 years. It used to be the normal time for that type of a felony. I mean, it's not credit card fraud or it's not a little scam, it's breaking into people's homes and apartments. But lest we forget, you know, there's a federal government that we are also associated with. And it seems to me that there's an awful lot of money going to Washington, that billions that have been spent in desert wars and so forth. And perhaps if we had just a small percentage of that money come back to local jurisdictions, there might be a better handle on crimes. Well, thank you very much. And I know the Glendale PD is a totally effective and organized force. And I know that it makes no sense for burglars or anyone else to come to Glendale or Burbank, for that matter, and maybe even Pasadena. They should try other jurisdictions because the chances of getting busted in this one are much better than in others.
We will be there to agree with them.
That'd be my hot tip to anyone watching the...
Go elsewhere, don't come here.
We're trying to teach them that.
Anyway, good job, Chief.
I'll move the item.
881, I'll second it.
Thank you.
Roll call.
Councilmembers Friedman?
Yes.
Menucha?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Weaver?
Hi.
Mayor Quintero?
Yes. Next, please.
Next, we return to the full five-minute portion of oral communication discussion in as limited time, it's not a part of the agenda. Each speaker is allowed five minutes. Members of the council may question or respond to the speaker, but there'll be no debate or decision. And the city manager may refer to matter to the appropriate department for investigation and report. First speakers are from GAR Services. That's Sharon Roth, Sandy Doughty, and Eric Hamilton.
Congratulations, Mayor Quintero. Good evening, Mayor and members of city council. My name is Sandy Doughty and I'm the executive director of GAR Services. We are an employment program for adults with developmental disabilities. And tonight, we're here to talk to you about an upcoming event. I'd like to introduce Eric Hamilton, who is our incoming board president, and Sharon Roth, who is our foundation director. Each year, we celebrate in May, the first Saturday in May, Derby Day. It's the same day as the Kentucky Derby. And this year is our 21st year and we're here to invite all of you to attend and join us at Derby Day. This year, we're doing something special for our third year in a row. We are going to be presenting the Campbell Award of Excellence to Larry Zarian. His sons will be there to accept this award in his memory. And this award was named after our founders, Jerry and Phyllis Campbell. GAR Services is an employment program that employs 70 adults with developmental disabilities. I know many of you have been to Derby Day, have been to GAR Services, and are familiar with our program. But we would like to personally extend an invitation to all of you to come. And like I said, we're honoring Larry Zarian. I know many of you know him personally, knew him personally, and we're excited to be able to honor him with this award. Larry, every year, would sponsor a table and would invite officers from the Glendale Police Department to sit at a table so that they could attend this event. And this was something that he did every year lovingly, from his heart, and wanted to provide an opportunity for the officers who protect this city to join us and support GAR Services. So I'm going to let Eric talk a little bit about our program and then Sharon will conclude with more information about the event. In the meantime, I'm going to leave invitations with all of you.
Good evening. As incoming president, we have a full plate at GAR Services. We've totally revamped our business model in the last 10 months. If you're ever having a bad day, come by GAR and you're going to see 70 people with smiles on their faces, working hard. And Derby Day is one of our major fundraisers. It starts at 11:30. It's a country fair. We're having fried chicken, the usual, you know, what else are we...
Lots of good food.
Lots of good food. And to finish it off, you can actually watch the Kentucky Derby at Pickwick. So it's May 5th, 11:30, and I hope to see you there. And Sharon Roth, our foundation director.
Thank you very much. I've had the privilege of growing up in Glendale, having graduated from Glendale High School. I continue to live and work in Glendale and I consider it a great honor to work for GAR. It's a great privilege to service adults who in the past were institutionalized, but now they're able to work, live independently, and contribute to society. They have the same needs and desires and aspirations that you and I do. I hope you'll take the chance to come by and visit. Like you said, if you have a bad day, it just puts a smell on your face. I've always said my mantra is, working at GAR is like working at Disneyland. It's a beautiful place to be. This is a busy month for nonprofits. Over the next four weeks, you have the Glendale Adventist Gala, followed the week after by Brosfer Cause Serothimus, followed by our Derby Day, and then just four days later with the Glendale Healthy Kids Taste of Glendale. But in the spirit collaboration, I can assure you that each one of these four organizations work together, work with each other, either by attending each other's events, by monetarily supporting each other's events, or by helping and working at each other's events. In fact, this is the third year in a row that we are collaborating with Glendale Healthy Kids at Their Taste of Glendale. And we'll be at Massage Envy on that Wednesday night doing a taste of wine, which I think you would all enjoy. So please come by, please attend this event, and help us continue servicing these adults that need these services and help them to become the outstanding citizens that they want to be. Thank you.
You.
If I could add, they didn't talk about they have a robust silent auction area that they just love to see my wife go into every year, right? Every year. Fill up the whole back of the van.
Herbert Milano, followed by Chinook Ramirez.
Mayor Quintero, congratulations, members of the city council and city staff. My name is Herbert Milano. I'd like to address a couple of misconceptions with regard to my advocacy. I've been a property owner in the city of Glendale for 25 years. I lived in Glendale for 20 years. My kids were raised in Glendale schools, from elementary, middle school, and so on. They're now graduating from college. I want to say something that is of concern to me concerning city policy and long-term policy. And some of them were things that were done before Ms. Friedman came on board. But imagine for a moment that a group of employees comes to an employer and asks the employer, can we have five years of pay without work? Now, it seems preposterous, but that's exactly what happened in 2001. When 400 employees from police and fire and their association came to you and said, we want to retire five years early, and you approved that, in effect, what you did was to remove nearly 2,000 men years from the city streets. That's the effect. And you see, when we are proposing that the city be prudent with its money, prudent with the way it sets its pensions and benefits, at the end of the day, these things don't come free as it was proposed to the city council members back then, that it wasn't going to cost you anything or that it wasn't going to cost the city anything. It's a significant burden. In 2005, during Mr. Najarian's first year, the city approved the formation of a group that I still, to this day, do not understand why it is there, a union of city managers. And by so doing, you have a significant increase in bargaining of managers. I mean, to anybody who's ever been in management or owned a business, that's preposterous. And the impact that we have on the city's budget is significant. And those are monies, those are resources that are then not available for us to bring in and put into additional employees that you may need, whether it is for the police force or whether it's for any other city department. You see, in my opinion, management has been, to a great degree, been the greatest beneficiaries of these actions going back to 2005. The other issue that I have is when you look at the trends, and I looked back at the workforce demographic report, you will see a 40% increase in management positions from 1999 to 2009. And when you look at the same percentages with regard to rank and file, barely a 1% increase. Where is the city's money going? You know, I understand that to a great degree, the economy has impacted the city's finances, but that's partly because you guarantee the pensions to 7 and 3/4%. You know, the decisions that you take in 2001, 2005, and prior years, eventually will come back to haunt you. When you decide that you're going to give a manager a $20,000 increase without any really justification, except that, you know, he was offered a position at Burbank, you're not going to imagine that the rank and file is not going to look at that and say, wait a second, if you have the money to just hand off a manager $20,000 for no real reason, why would they not come to you and ask for equity? And then, when we come in and try to speak during the budget sessions and give you our opinion, give you the warnings, and those of us who have studied the budget and come to you and say, look, what you're doing now is unfair, either unfair to many of the employees of the city, or unfair to the population, or unfair to the equity that we want as rate payers and taxpayers. You know, those decisions have an impact that is very significant. And unfortunately, the economy only is accountable for part of it. The rest of it are decisions that you took in years past. Thank you very much.
Chinook Ramirez, followed by Mike Mohill.
Good evening. This is a matter of principle. I'm putting the following on notice. President Barack and Michelle Obama and administration, the United States Supreme Court justices, the FBI, the INS, Homeland Security, the Department of Justice, and Eric Holder, ICE, all judges and administrative law judges, the Latino racist and bullies, gangbangers in uniform from the inept and non-responsive Glendale Police Department, along with the racist Latino city attorney, Garcia, and Mayor Frank Quintero, who I might add, I came here in good faith. You talk about fairness. Just because I'm a Latina does not mean that I will always have fairness when it comes to Latinos. They will be the first ones to censor me. So whenever you see this Ramirez, don't ever give me a Latino because they are the biggest racist, the biggest bullies. And people like me who stand up against illegal immigration and gangbangers get assaulted, attacked, and beaten by these people. City attorney, Garcia, Latino, and Quintero, Latino, or excuse me, you. Your eyes are rather crooked. I don't trust you. And same with you, Quintero. And you know what? 99.9% of the times, I'm usually right on the money about people. I could look at an individual and I'm good. And along with that, people, I stand here, I don't make a penny. You make a bundle of money. I don't make a penny. But I come here in good faith, with clean hands, to expose what happens to me and to other military veterans, beaten or attacked or robbed. Who protects us? Absolutely nobody. But I'll say one thing, you ain't no Kurt Pringle, Mayor Frank Quintero. God bless Mayor Kurt Pringle of Anaheim, or the ex-mayor, I should say, because that man allowed freedom. And when an individual, a mayor, allows freedom of speech in a city, the city will flourish, as did Anaheim blessed supersonic brain ex-mayor Kurt Pringle. God bless that man. And he was a wholesome white man. Having said that, I will now go on to this. And again, I left Mexico with the approval of the Department of Justice. Not my father nor my mother swam the Rio Grande, thank you. I am admonishing the cities Glendale, Burbank, and Pasadena. And it would behoove all legal, law-abiding citizens to know, in case you haven't been told or haven't assessed these cities, unfortunately, I have some alarming news, and that is the aforementioned cities have an epidemic of criminal illegal aliens and gangbangers. However, in a sad state of affairs, they are aided and abetted by the Latino gangbangers in uniform and Mayor Frank Quintero and your city attorney, Garcia. Stop voting for these Latinos, please, I beg you. Legal, law-abiding citizens and military veterans have systematically been violated, abused, and denied equal protection under the law and due process rights. Many have come back from war and been killed here in America by these criminal illegal aliens and gangbangers. And we see some here in their suits. Again, we have a chronic infestation of gangbangers in these three cities, Glendale, Burbank, and Pasadena, who I choose to call the secret safe haven sanctuary cities for the Latino criminal empire. And as a victim, and I will not be a victim anymore, but a victorious human being, again, I do not make a penny and I'm pandering to nobody. And in respects to Mr. Najarian, with all due respect, it is not a safe city. Glendale is not. It used to be 20 years, over 20 years ago, before he came into office. It is no more. Talk to the people. I know that for sure, including me. I was assaulted at Chevron. So again, tourists, do not come here. I'd be a liar, a pathological liar, if I told you it is safe. I'd be a liar, a pathological liar, if I told you it is safe. It is not. Grand theft, petty theft, and all types of crimes, including assault and battery, and all types of homicides are rampant here in these three cities. And again, I blame the following employers who have saturated their businesses with hiring criminal illegal gangbangers and illegals. They are Chevron gas stations, Macy's, Target, Nordstroms, Ralphs, CVC, restaurants, security guards, including your Glendale police, B-line buses, Metro buses, Glendale Galleria. And just look around, you see gangbangers everywhere. I can't even leave my purse around because I had things taken out of my bag. I mean, literally, people, look at what's going on. What are you going to call, the cops because you got a cellphone missing? Again, Glendale is not safe. Fire Frank Quintero and city attorney Garcia. They're no good. They're corrupted. Thank you.
Less than two hours, and already, Mike Mohill, followed by James Griggs.
Good evening, Mayor Quintero, council members, and the viewing audience. My name is Mike Mohill. As the reign of Laura Freeman as mayor comes to a close, one has to look at her leadership over the past 12 months. City expenses continue to exceed revenue. Expected city services slashed again. Office vacancy about 20%. Unemployment about 17%. Home prices continue to plummet, as do rental rates. 62% of Glendale residents or renters are condo owners. Nearly 30% or 600 city employees earn at least $100,000 a year, a new class of millionaires at retirement. Budgets of basic city services have been slashed to pay for unfunded payroll, pensions, and medical obligations of city employees. Many city employees have retirement pensions between 70 and 90% in their last years of their last years of employment. Many employees are able to retire at the ripe old age of 50 or 55 and live comfortably for the rest of their lives. Council did renegotiate with the unions, but no hard bargaining like reducing the benefit factor percentage, outsourcing of jobs, raising retirement age to 67 or 401K plan. Police and city officials continue to fight gang issues in northwest Glendale. With more city revenues used to pay for city pensions, little money is left for more police patrolling, local parks to look a little ratty, and library hours shortened to pay for a bloated city payroll. End of an air. City council caves into a small group of animal zealots. The volunteer roads float association, which has existed for years, was hijacked. As the city infrastructure of roads, water, electricity continues to crumble, and public transportation continues to fall behind, council worries more about paper or plastic road diets for bicycle riders. To ease the water rates paying for the consumer, water rates will go up 1% this year and after next April election, 2%, followed by 4% and 5% the following years. About a 12% water rate increase in four years and a 59% water rate over the past 10 years. Rate increases approved by Mrs. Freeman, Mr. Najarian, and Mr. Weaver. Mayor Quintero liked the idea of tier-rate structuring, but would always vote against a rate increase. Of course, he always approved water transfers from the GWP into the pockets of his union supporters, a two-faced politician. Councilman Dave Weaver recently said, "If you can't afford living in Glendale, just move out," and already thousands have. In 2009, former mayor Laura Freeman received from the city unions $4,000, an ADI, Advanced Development and Investment Company, a public housing company, under federal investigation, subcontractors $16,000 in her behalf. Councilman R. Najarian $15,000 from the city unions and $27,000 from ADI subcontractors. Mayor Frank Quintero $15,000 from the city unions and $23,500 from ADI subcontractors. Council members claim they did not know who the subcontractors were of ADI, but cashed their checks anyway on the way to the bank. Glendale Police Officers Association Political Action Committee supported Councilman Dave Weaver with a check for $11,000 in his last year's election. Out with the old and new, in with the new. City continues to spend thousands of dollars with an outside consultant suggesting a new branding tagline, "Your Life Animated." A better tagline, $70 million for not-so-smart smart meters. Corruption flourishes in the jewel city of Glendale, and former councilman John Draymond continues under federal investigation for his Montrose Conduit makeover and Montrose Shopping Park alleged embezzlement. A great legacy to remember for the April 13 election. Thank you. My name is Mike Mohill.
James Griggs, followed by James Dow.
Good evening, mayor, council members, staff. I'd like to add my congratulations to the others, Mr. Mayor. I guess, welcome back. My name is James Griggs, and I'm an electrician at Grayson Power Plant. I've been an employee with the city for six years. Prior to that, I worked in hydroelectric for 12 years. I'm here tonight to discuss the investment of the generation section at GWP and the retention of a skilled and efficient workforce. If the goal of the city of Glendale is to produce inexpensive and reliable power, I think we've missed the mark. The phrase "pay me now" or "pay me later" comes to my mind. The oldest steam generation system in Glendale was commissioned in 1941. 50 to 60% of the auxiliary systems are the original systems. That includes motor control and wiring. Nothing lasts forever. We're doing the equivalent of keeping up a 1956 Chevy. It looks nice, brings back fond memories, but it's not efficient, nor is it reliable. And of course, safety is a factor in a plant that's 70-plus years old. We're not making widgets. We're generating electricity, which is inherently dangerous. And in an old steam plant, when something goes wrong, it goes very wrong. Sometimes it could be lethal. Unskilled and untrained workers meet unavailable units for a long period of time. You cannot readily fix this without losing generation revenue. The loss of ability to react to issues quickly means that you cannot maintain efficient service. In addition, the power plant is critical in the event of an earthquake. If you lose these tie lines, that's not a small matter. We have a good quality workforce that is well-trained and has been working diligently to keep the water and power functioning for some time. But if you don't pay a competitive wage, you won't keep skilled people. If you pay less than a comparable wage, you'll lose that experience. It takes about two years to fill positions currently at GWP. Apprenticeships are three to four years. It takes a long time to learn the trade. When you're seeking apprentice applications, Glendale will be the last choice. You won't find a lineman that will come from GWP or Burbank to work here. And our apprentices seem to be completing training and finding better opportunities in other organizations. In other words, you created a training ground. They're just leaving. I came here to work in a steam and gas environment, and I found it challenging. I really found a home here. But I live in Lancaster, and the city of Palmdale is currently, they have a permit to currently build a hybrid power plant. It's about almost 600 megawatts. It'll be the cleanest plant, the most efficient plant in the LA basin. So I asked myself, "Why would I drive two hours a day to work in a 70-year-old plant when I can drive 10 minutes to work in a brand-new power plant? Doesn't make any sense." So I guess the bottom line is, if skilled workers have a choice that makes more sense, they'll leave. We need the city to support the GWP as a whole, and we need to have a fair and equitable contract. And salary surveys, they're not without precedent to retain qualified workers. In fact, not implementing it in the last contract created a deficit of trust. But I want to leave you with a question. Do you really want to be at the bottom of the utility wage scale? Because I came from a place that done just that, the State of California Department of Water Resources. And I'm uniquely qualified to tell you, it doesn't work. Thank you very much for your time.
James Dow, followed by Charles Hooker.
Honorable mayor, members of the city council, my name is James Dow. I'm a resident of the city of Glendale. I was born here in Glendale, went to Glendale High School, and been working for the city of Glendale for over 30 years. I work in the electrical test department, which, the meter shop, electric meter shop. I'm speaking tonight because of my concern regarding the impact of the annual transfer of money from GWP to the city's general fund on the residents of the beautiful city of Glendale. Due to this annual transfer of funds, GWP is unequipped to maintain its own infrastructure and incapable of providing a fair contract to its workers. It is the money the city transfers to the general fund that impacts the rates residents pay, not the workers' wages. GWP employee wages account for about 15% of GWP's total budget and has no impact on the city's general fund. There is absolutely no correlation between utility worker wages and the increasing or decreasing of utility rates. As a utility worker, we go out every day regardless of the weather conditions, the time, or the day of the week to ensure that water and electricity are provided for all of our customers, both residential and commercial. We've always been there for the people who live and work in the city of Glendale, but we have yet to be able to reach a fair agreement with the city. Why is this? We understand the city's general fund depends on the transfer it gets from the utility, but the transfer is preventing the department from maintaining its infrastructure or preventing the department from paying fair wages in order to hire and retain skilled workforce needed to maintain the infrastructure. Then this city council is doing a disservice, not only to the utility, but also to the rate payers.
My name is Charles Hooker. I live in the city of Glendale. In fact, I've lived here all my life. And one thing, I've always been curious, why do we need, in a time of, well, it's kind of a depression since the last few years, why do we need a sister cities? Why do we send all of these different people to, I know they sometimes, I guess they go on their own money and everything, but it sure seems like having a sister city that we're, we don't need that kind of expense right now. We could use it on schools and roads and everything else. And the next thing I was kind of curious about is one of the police officers happened to speak about this brown bear being in the city of, unless I'm wrong, I believe that he was tranquilized in Montrose, not some other city. And I'm glad that at least the Glendale does not shoot the bears and everything like some of the cities do. They at least let it go back into the wild. You have sometimes in some cities where they have a bunch of hillbillies in their trucks and they go out and kill these poor animals. And the other thing I wanted to know is, Glendale is a city of older people, and how are we going to pay their rates and everything on a fixed budget for these gentlemen that just left? They're already making quite a good money right now. I know I went through the apprenticeship program, and that was back 40 years ago, and I had a struggle to go through it, but it was something that I overcame. And with the overtime and everything else that we worked, which most of the city employees do work, and I cannot really understand why we need a rate increase or anything for our water. Thank you.
Sharon Wiseman, followed by Margaret Hammond.
Thank you. Congratulations, Mayor Quintero. I'm Sharon Wiseman from far north Glendale, speaking as individual. And in response to one of the former speakers, I'm a proud granddaughter of an illegal alien who came from Sweden shortly, just prior to 1900. And I think immigration is what makes this country strong, and I think, while we need to work on legalizing, I don't think immigrants are the problem. And I came here tonight to ask the council to accept a certificate acknowledging that an Arbor Day tree is going to be planted in one of our city parks in honor of Glendale city employees and thanks for all their hard work. And I'm sorry so many of them just left prior to my giving you this. Bill and I, my husband Bill and I, really appreciate the quality of life here in Glendale. We've lived here since 1986, and we believe it isn't an accident that in comparison to our neighboring cities, our streets have fewer potholes, our parks are better maintained, our crime rates, at least we're going down until this recent situation with parolees. And that is despite a lower ratio of officers to population than our surrounding cities. Our police is still doing an excellent job, and I think our utilities are much more reliable than our neighbors. We happen to live in a part of Glendale that is only a few blocks wide, and we have the city of Los Angeles to our west and an incorporated county to our east that is serviced by Edison, a private electrical company. And our neighbors in that area did not get their power restored as rapidly as we did in Glendale after recent windstorms. And that's typical, that we have excellent service. And Glendale also has excellent stellar libraries, as we just saw earlier tonight. And we really appreciate our planning department and all the work that they did for a North Glendale community plan. And as I mentioned in an earlier council meeting, we've already seen some positive results of the zoning being modified to fit our particular neighborhoods. And I, you know, thank them for looking at South Glendale next. And actually, I know, due to the extraordinary budget crisis, some people that helped a lot with our parks and things have been let go, and I hope that somehow they can be rehired, that the economy picks up and we're able to call them back. And I want to, of course, acknowledge that we all want a full day's work for a full day's pay, but I have to counter some of the prior speakers, that I don't think unions are the problem. As I've mentioned in earlier council meetings a couple of years ago, unions grew out of medieval guilds, and membership represents competency. It represents people that have been trained, and often, again, as we spoke earlier tonight, unions provide training. Where our colleges are underfunded, where our job centers aren't getting the federal money they've got, unions are picking up that because they know the benefit of the working people and the citizens who enjoy the benefits of that quality of life. And I want to caution some of the speakers, we really are all in this together. And I, I want to caution some of the speakers, we really are all in this together. We shouldn't be fighting one another over, over who gets what money here. We need to be looking at the most efficient, best way to continue our quality of life here and, and maintain it going forward. And so, thank you tonight for your time. It's, it's been a long evening, and if you would, except this, we want to thank all of, all of the hard-working employees of Glendale. Thank you.
Margaret Hammond.
Good evening. I don't know if I should say congratulations, mayor, after listening to some of the carry-on, but at any rate, being the mayor of Glendale, I think is an honor and a privilege. So, and again, my name is Margaret Hammond, and I feel that I am very happy to live in Glendale. I could live anywhere I want, really, financially, but I happen to love it here, and as I've said before, it's like having a family that I otherwise would not have. So, anyway, that's my opinion. And if people are that frightened or whatever, I don't know, I'm 83, I go out all the time. Sometimes I'm out at 12:30 at night if I go out to parties or whatever. It's very strange. I just never think about it. I guess I feel safe and I come and go as I like. And I think that's a wonderful feeling, and I don't know that there's very many places that, you know, you can have that feeling. Now, my one thing in life is the free bulky item pickup. Mr. Zern, and 818-548-3916. And I feel that it helps to our quality of life, to get rid of all that trash, otherwise we would look like, here I go, getting in trouble. Parts of downtown LA that I've gone through where there's junk piled all over this place, it doesn't stick around our streets very long, so I'm glad to say that. Now, last Wednesday, as many of you know, I'm on the Clean and Beautiful Committee, and last Wednesday evening, the results of the poster contest, which involves 9,800 children in our schools, some of them 100%. Now, that's just the children. That isn't the teachers, that isn't the parents, or grandparents, actually. And those entries were weaned down to 50 finalists. And the contest was called "I Love My Neighborhood." And the reason for that is the children in their posters said, "I wish you all could have seen their posters." I don't know how many of you bother to go and look at them. They're wonderful. The children's enthusiasm for living in Glendale. And as I said before, they love the parks, they love the libraries, they love the programs, some are the swimming pool, they, some of them just were very enthusiastic about all the wonderful things about Glendale. Now, I know that you're cutting back on funds and whatnot, but this is a program that's really worthwhile. Don't forget that this is, I don't know whether you'd call it training or helping them to learn about being good citizens. And it starts not in, in preschool. Actually, we had Robin's Nest who, one little person, one of the 50, couldn't even see over the table for her, get her trophy. And up to sixth grade, and I think there may even have been a couple of mid, mid-school children, but, for whatever. But I'm saying, if you could see their faces and coming to get their trophies and how proud they are, and their parents, and their grandparents, I mean, for one child, there could be up to 10 people coming to that event, and it's really wonderful. I mean, that affects a lot of people. And it's done with the help of the neighborhood services staff and the Clean and Beautiful volunteers. We work hard on it to raise money, to promote our programs. And we feel that, you know, we do Night on the Plaza, we raise money that way, and in many other ways, to promote this feeling of neighborhood and family of, for the children of Glendale, to feel safe and to be happy living in this city. And I think that's important, and safe. They feel safe. That was the thing that so many of them, they come to you and speak, and they're very kind of, oh, well, this is, you know, they can talk to you. So, I really feel it's a good program, and I'm telling you that you should be proud. Now, Mr. Weaver came and had his picture taken, and the worst of it was, we had big long lineups because we only had Mr. Weaver. If some of you other people would have come and volunteered to have your picture taken, the children would, would have been delighted. And we really feel it's a good program and one the city should stay involved in all the time. Artie, you could have come and had your picture taken with him.
Could I know?
Please, or anybody, and/or anybody that would like, you too, Mr. Garcia. I don't just mean the city council.
All right, thank you, Ms. Hammond.
Okay? Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, that's the end of oral communications. Any comments from the council?
I just wanted to address Mr. Hooker's concern about the sister city programs. They're not funded by the city. They're funded by the community. People in the community go out and raise money on their own. Usually, people from those countries or whose heritage is from those countries raise the money to sponsor the sister city programs. It's not funded by city money, just to address your concerns. And to the Wisemans, I think that your gesture is a very nice gesture of the Arbor Day tree being planted on behalf of the city, the citizens, citizens, I'm so tired, behalf of the employees of Glendale. I'm not an employee of Glendale the way that they are, but I'm sure that they very much will appreciate the gesture.
Any other comments? Have a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
We are adjourned. During new business? Okay.